Okay, so this meeting is being convened virtually in accordance with recent amendments to the New York State Open Meetings Law, which allow for virtual meetings without an in-person requirement. And I just want to announce that today, the governor extended the emergency emergency declaration, which will allow those amendments to the Open Meetings Law to continue in effect until at least March 16th, unless the executive or the emergency declaration is earlier rescinded. So we have a quorum in attendance tonight. The meeting is being recorded and a transcript will be provided at a later date. And we are good to go, Chairman Kirkwood.
Okay, very good. Thanks so much.
You're welcome.
Our first item is, I guess we're really not going to have a discussion on it, but Whitney Singleton's here representing the applicant. And I guess we decided that we didn't have quite enough information to really make it worth every once in a while. We had a couple of things that we really needed to know. So Whitney, I'll turn it over to you at this point, and if there are any questions, we can take them from you.
Yeah, we we, in an effort to find a location, which is safe for the applicants and their and their horses, while at the same time accommodating the environmental concerns of the planning board. We'd like to go back and look at a couple of items, confirm some what at least delineation, explore the possibility of moving the the structure closer to the existing barn and further out of view of adjoining neighbors. So before putting your board in a position of having to act or pursue a course, we thought it would be helpful for you to have that information.
Okay. I think we agree. I think that makes good sense. I think it's in the best interest of the applicant, the board, and the public as well. So that's terrific.
But I know I know how staff hates when something gets scratched from the agenda and the meeting's much shorter, so I apologize for that.
We are remarkably flexible.
Yes. Okay, so I guess we will be on a, we don't have a public hearing to adjourn to a date certain. So I guess we'll just be on the next agenda based upon our submission dates.
Correct. Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Fair enough.
Yeah, okay. Thank you.
Thanks so much. Appreciate it.
And Whitney, if you and your team would like to meet and discuss things with staff, we're here to meet with you before your next meeting, if you have any questions or anything.
Okay, your dog looks exactly like my dog. Exactly. Goodbye, guys. Have a nice meeting.
Yeah, good night. Thanks, Whitney. Okay, our next matter is, we have two referrals from the town board for some local law referrals. We have a local law referral on to create chapter six of the code in the town of Newcastle to establish an alternate planning board members or members position for the town of Newcastle Planning Board. So we have this legislation and I had a conversation earlier with Jennifer and Sabrina and Bob and Dennis. And perhaps Jennifer can shed some light because she's got had some experience, perhaps more on the other side of the dais on this issue. I tried to reach the supervisor to get some sort of thinking as to what the town board was thinking in terms of this legislation with some detail. My concern is that we can have this enabling legislation, but it seems to me that we need to have some sort of guidance in terms of the day-to-day mechanics of it, if you will. So anyway, we've we've distributed this proposed law. I think the proposal is to add two positions as alternate members. And under certain circumstances, they would have the full obligation or say power, it's absurd, but responsibility for voting from time to time is necessary. So Jennifer, perhaps you can help us a little bit and explain your experience and what you've seen in other municipalities on this issue.
Sure, yeah, I'd be happy to. So I think most of my experience on this actually comes from, you know, my my representation of applicants. A lot of the boards that I sit with don't have alternates, but a lot of the boards that I appear before do have alternates. So you know, I think Chairman Kirkwood explained it pretty well that an alternate member of the board would step in when there's either a recusal. If a planning board member was recused from considering an application due to a conflict of interest or other issue. Another opportunity for an alternate to step in would be if a planning board member is absent from for one or more meetings. I think the recusal situation is is easier. And that's actually the the reason listed under the state statute for use of alternates. It's limited to conflicts of interest. Typically, local municipalities that do designate alternate board members supersede state law through a provision of the municipal home rule law to have a local law that allows for alternates in situations other than conflicts of interest. For example, if you are going to be absent from a meeting for, you know, for a period of time, particularly for zoning boards where most applications are considered on just one meeting. Having a board member even absent one for one meeting can mean, you know, significant issue for the applicants if there's not enough members. So the recusal situation tends to be the easier one to deal with. The chair would designate an alternate to fill in for that recused member. You could designate the alternate on a rotational basis to ensure fairness and avoid claims of like cherry picking an alternate to fill a position. And that alternate would then participate in the application through to the conclusion of the matter. When you have an absence of a board member, let's say a board member is going to be absent for one or two meetings. That's that's the trickier situation because it's left to local practice. It's left to your local rules or procedure, local local code as to how you want to handle that. You have the option of having that board member, that alternate member, sit in just for the purpose of that one meeting. Say you're you're considering a vote on a negative declaration, but you're not going to be deciding the the underlying application at that meeting. That alternate member may vote on the neck deck. And then the underlying, the the regular board member may be back at the next meeting when you're considering the resolution. Do you have the alternate member continue on? Or do you swap the regular board member back in for a decision on the on the underlying application? In that instance, some boards say, we're not going to vote or our alternates. We're just going to consider this matter as a, you know, as a short board, as four members instead of five. And 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 decline to use the alternate in in cases of absences. It's really a matter of local discretion, local practice, and how you feel the you know, is the best practice for your board. The other issue is whether alternates should attend all meetings and participate in all meetings, just as regular board members would, but just not vote unless called upon to vote. I might, I tend to think that that may be the better practice because then when you do need to call upon an alternate to vote, those alternates have attended the meetings, they're they're familiar with the application. There's no catch-up time for that alternate board member.
Yeah, I agree. I think that's the only way to go.
Yeah, I think it you end up backtracking if you were to do it the other way. And you would need to to, you know, let that alternate board member have an opportunity to ask questions. You may have to re-rediscuss certain issues so that the board member can can get up to speed. And another question is whether alternates are counted for the purposes of determining whether there's a quorum for the meeting. Usually, that's not a problem for this board. I mean, we almost always have a quorum available for the meeting, but that's been an issue in some communities as well. So there's a lot of, there's a lot of sort of boots-on-the-ground, practical issues to iron out to make sure that if the town board does enact this legislation, that it would be implemented smoothly and practically. You can make recommendations to the town board to have some of those items legislated in the town, in the in the code provision that's being that's being presented. Or you can deal with it in your rules of procedure that we've been discussing and and figure out a way that's best for your board to administer those issues.
Okay, very good. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Yep, I think it's a good summary. From my perspective, I think it would be, you know, if someone signs up to be an alternate, I would assume that they would want to be present and then up to speed, whether it's virtually through our hybrid meetings, if we go to hybrid. I'm not so sure about the active participation. Lord knows we have we we often confuse applicants with just five opinions. Adding two more might really add a little bit too much frosting to that cake. So I leave that to others and see what what they think about that. So I think it would give more meaning, obviously, to an alternative member to be participating in the in the proceedings. But there is that other downside. It's almost as if, at that point, you may as well go to a seven-person board, which I guess we can do under state law as well as opposed to five. So I leave that to people in terms of what what our thoughts are on that. I think the recusal, as you said, Jennifer, is the the easy case, the clear case, the one that we do, we do confront from time to time. And I think it would be good to have an extra person. I think it's also a good procedure to have people who are, for lack of a better term, you know, interning or training for an open position on the planning board going forward at some at some point. So they have a good idea. I think it's a one-year appointment that's being proposed by the town board. So they have some idea what they're getting into, so they have plenty of time to escape if they don't want to do it. They have plenty of time to really dig into it and and get up to speed. So I like that concept a lot, having people, you know, coming through that who might be interested in serving on our board, this the planning board, and seeing what we do and what we you know, what the typical applications are.
Sorry, Bob, was that that, is that a separate proposal you're referencing?
No, no, no.
The one year, what's the one year?
Oh, I think the the proposal, the law is that it would be a one-year proposal, a one-year appointment for an alternate.
I see, a term of one calendar year.
Yes.
I I'm sorry, sorry. I thought you were referencing something else.
No, no, no. So, and I guess they're thinking the same thing, that I'll do it for one year and see how the person likes it, you know, how it works. Also get some feedback. I imagine with time, if with the town board and the planning board determine that one year's too short or not enough, I'm sure that can be amended, but my concern on this, of course, is we're going to go through and spend some time on our procedures. And obviously, we're going to have to be revamping those if, in fact, the town board approves the alternate planning board member.
So I, sorry, go ahead, Tom.
Go ahead, Elid.
I have a lot of questions, a lot of concerns. You know, my main question is, where did this come from? Who's idea, well, maybe it's multiple questions. Whose idea was this? What problem is this trying to solve? You know, I've only been on the board two years. I know others on the board have considerably more experience than I, but
Some of us were born here.
But this certainly has not been, this certainly doesn't seem to solve any problems that have existed on the two, you know, in the two years that I've been on the board. And it just feels like an answer to a question no one has asked or a solution to a problem that doesn't exist. And maybe only will create, I mean, I'm open to have my mind changed, but only will create, sort of creates new problems that that just don't need to exist. But maybe those answers are out there. I mean, what what is, what is, what is the purpose of this? Where did it come from? What what are we trying to solve for?
Well, those are good questions.
It came from the town board. I mean, I don't know that we, other than watching town board, town board meetings, I don't know that we have any further insight into that.
Right, so I mean, it's, go ahead, Tom, go ahead.
I'm in complete agreement, Eldad, with your with your questions and and your your concerns. And, you know, I have a lot of questions also that probably upon being answered would would cause me to, you know, think that this might be a good idea. But I've tried to answer all the questions that I have, and I can't come up with any that that make it to be a wise thing to do. I also wonder, how did this bubble up all of a sudden? And it would be, it would be interesting to to have an answer to that question. Not how, but why did this bubble up? I mean, what is there? Is there a problem out there that people perceive that this that this would solve? And I think that I would need that context in to begin with, in order to try and, you know, give any kind of a, you know, reasoned opinion about, you know, what would be the right solution? Because I really don't know what the problem is yet. But I I do see, I think that I I do think that on the face of it, you know, we're, we've been working hard to try and make things more efficient. And we've been, you know, working hard to be tougher on ourselves, right? And I just don't, I I just think that another member of the board, you know, a seventh member would, first of all, it would just extend the discussion period. It would bring, it would bring more opinions into the conversation that we already have enough opinions in the conversation. I'm not suggesting that we need to to limit the scope of our inquiry. And maybe the board is constituted and the people who are on the board right now don't really serve that purpose very well, and that's for the town board to decide. But to, but to load it up with people, I think tends to, will tend to be counterproductive to what our real goals are here. And I especially, I mean, if this is going to go into place, there are a lot of details to be worked out. I mean, the one detail where, gee, you know, a person is absent and on a particular application, you have a, you have an alternate member sitting for that application, rendering opinions, guiding, helping to guide the discussion and give and give guidance to the applicant. And then the next meeting, the regular board member is back. And that alternate is not sitting and not providing, you know, guidance. That seems wrong to me. So does that mean that the that 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 alternate member then sits in for the meeting, the subsequent meeting, the second meeting of that application, and then talks about, and then joins the meeting? And how do you keep track of that? I mean, it just just seems like it's, it just seems to me like it's going to be really, really difficult unless there's a cleaner way to do it. I don't know what that would be, but there's really not enough information in the proposed legislation to actually give us guidance on any of that.
Yeah, there are tons of options.
That I've heard already, but, you know, there's, there's lots of things that could be done here. I think we don't need two alternatives. That'll be like so many chairs. I don't think we have enough chairs, you know, behind the, you know, the where we usually sit when we don't have COVID. But one is enough. And the one should be given all the documents and be prepared for any meeting that occurs that where somebody is absent. And then that would actually be, probably would be equal to, or maybe even somewhat better than dealing with not having one or two people, you know, that are absent. So the person, I would say, the person that's the alternate. I don't see why he would have any any reason to talk about what's going on because he's not having any vote if everybody is there. You know, so it wouldn't be like, oh, we have, you know, we have five people now and there's a sixth person who is a, you know, is a you know, backup person. And they can just, you know, talk right, you know, from the beginning and everything. I don't think that's, that that works. Be, they can study and be aware, they can ask questions afterwards. And you go that way. But if we were going to do something like this, then I I think it's, there's a plus in that we would have people who have one person we would have that has been keeping up with the documentation that could add, you know, to the story if one person is absent. And if two people are absent, I don't think we need two alternates because we do, as you've suggested, Tom. We work pretty well with three or four people.
Yeah, I don't, under the circumstance where somebody doesn't show up and we need, first of all, I I'm worried about the premise that you have to have five in order to have a productive and and a legitimate meeting. I mean, I don't understand the presupposition in that because it seems to be, it seemed the the objective seems to be adding alternate members so that you have a sitting board of five members. And so I don't understand that part. Why is that necessary?
I think the the premise is more for voting. For voting is when it becomes a bigger deal. And that's because, you know, you need obviously three votes to to pass an application, to to approve an application. And it more comes in the, from the eyes of the applicant, I guess, when you have, you know, only three board members present and you need to convince all three of them, you have a little bit of a harder
Where's the data? When's the last time we voted three O on anything?
Right, no, and I'm not saying that. I don't think that any of these issues necessarily pertain to this board. I think you have a pretty, you know, most members of this board have a really good attendance record, especially when it comes to nights when you have resolutions on your agenda. And usually, your votes are unanimous. So, you know, I don't think that it's really a practical issue that this board faces, but I think
Is this being raised for, sorry, Jen, but is this being raised for other boards or just the planning board?
That's a good question. I think the legislation was just for the planning board. I don't know that. I saw one that pertained to the zoning board as well.
Did the zoning board have an alternate in the past?
I I do believe the zoning board had an alternate previously. I don't know if they still do. I can tell you that a couple of years ago, they did alternates for the Architectural Review Board, primarily because of attendance. They were having problems obtaining a quorum from that board. So that was the reason. I, like you, do not know what the genesis of putting alternatives on this board is is about. You know, I do think that, you know, we're taking notes of your comments right now. We can formulate a comment memo back to the town board and really ask for more information, if you will, and bring out some of the concerns or the questions, rather, not concerns, but the questions that you're raising.
Yeah, two last points for me. One is that, just to reiterate, this is completely unnecessary unless I can be convinced otherwise. I mean, there's been no, like, and there's been no information as to why this is necessary. And two, a little bit less relevant and more minor, but on the detail, I also think one year is actually too short if we're gonna, if if we're gonna do it, which I I have no reason to support it at this time. If we were to do it, one year seems really short because I I mean, first of all, there are applications that last more than a year. And that 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 supposes that that the person gets an application on day one. But, you know, four months into their term, six months into their term, eight months, there's an application. Then they're gone a couple of months later. What's then, what's the point of that person? It just, none of this makes any sense to me.
But there is already, in the words that are before us, says that, you know, the the backup person can, his or her term can be redone after one year for another year and another year.
Yes, without limitation. I I see, but the, but the the term is for one year. And, you know, if they change their mind after one year, as as Bob was suggesting, it's sort of like dipping their toe in 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 the, you know, planning board service. And then they don't like it and
That may be, but, you know, we didn't have much of a pre-positioned kind of training.
Job training.
And, you know, I think that that this actually helps a little bit in having somebody that conceivably, you know, could take a full position, you know, when somebody, you know, retires, you know, like me someday.
So I I have a couple of questions about about that. I mean, there is the to put it in simple terms, it's a planning board member in training and for one year. And is there, is there, is there the supposition then that 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 alternate will fill the next vacancy and that the person who is going to be, whose term will be coming up will be dismissed because the planning, the the town board has this other person who has been in training? And here's, here's another aspect of that. If this, if one of the reasons to do this is to get experience in these positions for these alternate board members, if they need a year's training in order to to be effective and to be, to do a good job, why would you let them vote in the first year? I mean, the assumption is that they're in training, right? That maybe they shouldn't go, right? I mean, I don't understand that. It doesn't somehow, it seems a little confused. The objectives seem to be not clearly met, at least not clearly understood or clearly articulated because the way this is being positioned, it looks like it's a messy, messy, seems to be a little bit confused and convoluted with respect to all of that. So with respect to the town board, I think it would be, unless I'm mistaken, Bob, do we have a, do we have a work session with them on the first of March?
Yes, yes, it's still, it's still scheduled for March 1, a joint meeting.
I, there, I think that it would be, if we're really going to help them on this, I think it would be that this ought to be on that agenda so that we can actually have a conversation with them about about what their thoughts are about all of this and and be more helpful than just sending them a memo. Because I don't know what to say in the memo. I mean, I just don't know what to say about it because I don't, I don't know really what it's, you know, where it came from and and what it's really all about. So I would recommend that we, if we need to send them a note, I would send them a note asking them to put it on the agenda. And if we want to give some bullet points as to the questions we have, I think that's fine, but I think
I I I think we should tee it up with, you know, some of the questions that we've raised tonight, the operational issues, which I found to be very very unclear and 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 open to problems. And one of the issues I raised this morning was, you know, if you have someone coming in and voting, does it not perhaps even jeopardize the town? If it was for someone who's just coming at some late stage and and perhaps votes against the application, does it leave the town vulnerable to a challenge, an Article 78 challenge? Because the applicant feels that they haven't had someone take a good, hard look at the application, even though they're in the background as an alternate. The recuse, like, that makes a little bit more sense to me, but again, to Eldad's point, statistically, I mean, maybe we have a recusal once every two years or so, once every two or three years. I think, looking, thinking back, I think Sheila was recused and and recused herself in an application a couple of years ago. I know I recused myself on an application with Whipple. And, you know, so it was no problem. We got, you got through all the 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 hearings and decisions with four. So, you know, years ago, we had some real problems with quorums, but we haven't had problems with quorums at all in the last several years. So I think, you know, the issue is, is it a, you know, question in search of a problem is, is, you know, valid. I think we should send some bullet points and say operationally, yes, and concerns. Maybe the term is the concerns. What are we really trying to do here? Is this really just an internship? And of course, another real concern is it might very well be counterproductive to the streamlining that we're trying to undertake.
So if I may, what I'd like to do is, is, and I don't know how how this would work, but your next meeting is a joint meeting with the town board. I would like you all to have either a draft of this memo. I'd like to circulate a draft to you all to try and come to agreement on a draft that would be sent to the town board, but to make sure you have this in hand for your discussion on the first with the town board. Because I think that this is, it's good for you all to be in the same room, right, and talk about it.
Yeah, if we could put together a draft Um, uh, yeah, if we could put together a, a draft, I, and that's fine. I think it's, it would be good to. To give them a heads up on, you know, just a, a bullet point, I list, I think of, you know, what our concerns might be and the questions we might have. I don't think it needs to go through six iterations. Um, I mean, I, I'd leave it up to the chairman if he's willing to take it on and trust him to, to, you know, get that done. Um, with respect to having it in the same conversation in the same room, uh. Maybe this is off agenda, but um. I guess I'd like to ask if maybe this is a meeting that we actually, because I know that they are meeting in person now. If this is a meeting that we would be invited to join them in person and, and then do so. Or whether um, we feel still, some of us still feel uncomfortable with that and want to, to zoom into the meeting.
That's interesting. I didn't know they were meeting in person.
I, I think it depends on the meeting. I, my understanding is that certain meetings they've had in person and other meetings they've done virtually.
Well, I've been watching the latest, they have working sessions and town board meetings. Uh, they have been doing it for a couple of weeks now.
So they're works, and they're both the work sessions and the town board meetings are, are public?
Yes.
Okay, interesting.
I can follow through with uh, with the town administrator and see what she's planning. I mean, because I don't think that they're going to be. In person and not want you in person. It's a, it's a joint meeting.
Yeah.
So, so, so two things, if the board agrees, we can put together a draft and work with the chairman to finalize that draft to send to the town board and make sure you all have copies of it in preparation of your joint discussion. The second thing is I will follow through with the town administrator regarding that joint meeting and, and, you know, determine. If, if she, if she has any ideas to whether or not it will be an in-person or a Zoom meeting.
Do we get confirmation? Is everyone comfortable with the in-person?
I am.
I am.
I am also.
Anyone not?
I, I am okay with it.
Okay, okay. Are you okay, Jennifer?
Yeah, yeah, I've, I've been attending some in-person meetings.
Right, and, and it may be that we do it up at chat pack. Where there's more room to spread out, you know, or set up the, the assembly room to make sure there's adequate distance and we can put shields up, you know, Dick, if you. If you want, you know, I can get as many protections in place as, as we need.
I remember the last meeting we had at the chat pack, there would, shields would have been beneficial for that one.
Yeah.
That was a different issue.
There's a different town board.
A different issue, different town board definition, yes. We, we were, we were dealing with something uh, different than COVID.
So, um, does everyone agree to let the chairman work with us regarding that, the draft memo?
Yes.
Yes.
Okay, yes. Absolutely, thank you.
Okay, good.
Okay, we move now to our next referral. This is the local law referral on uh, chapter sixty, uh, section four, ten, H six. Uh, this is to require the development of AFFH units in new multifamily buildings and the BR, BRP zoning districts. Now, those of you who pay attention to our own meetings, they recognize this issue. Uh, because we already sent a memo to the town board, uh, supporting this last year. Uh, and I think it was dated May twentieth, Jennifer, you found it?
Yeah, that's right. Yep, yeah, um, Felicia circulated it to everyone earlier today.
Okay.
Yeah.
Does anyone feel any different?
The same local law.
I have some thoughts, yes. Um, well, I don't remember the details of our discussion, but I did see the memo that, that we sent and it was supportive. Um, and um, I. You know, I remain supportive conceptually with the attempts to promote. The development of affordable housing in our town. Uh, I have concerns with, um. The sort of, um, the meaningfulness of this local law. In that I worried that it will not have much, if any, of an impact on the amount of affordable housing. In our uh, town, absent additional changes to our town code, to our zoning. Um, so this language is fine. I don't think it does any harm, but I actually don't think it will do much good either. I would love some data. Um, uh, as to what uh, the thinking is as to what this will actually produce. Um, but I, I, just as a, a clarification, the BR and BRP districts. Are essentially the hamlet. Is that, is that fair to say?
Yes.
And there's an area in Millwood, um, that is also zone BR.
Right.
Right, so, um. My concern is absent other incentives to develop. Or eliminations of restrictions to develop. Um, I don't think this will yield much of anything. And so, um. That is where I stand on this. I mean, it's, uh, that's what I'm thinking about this. Not where I stand, but kind of what, you know, where, where my thinking has evolved and that. Uh, you know, this, you know, we said that this fills a gap. This essentially just closes the loop on, on, on AFFH and the ten percent for our. Uh, town as a whole, but uh, the question is what, you know, what is the point of this local law and will that. Uh, goal be achieved by these, uh, by this, uh, this change?
Okay, uh, fair points. Um, I, I, is there uh, support to send something in addition to what we wrote last time and. And, and say, well, it takes care of this gap, but uh, it's not likely to do anything really meaningful at this point. Uh, I mean, it's not the legislation that's in front of us, so we're supposed to comment on the legislation, so. Um, and maybe this is something, Eldad, we, we, we do in March one, have it on the agenda. Um, and speak about it in more of a global manner. I'm hoping. That we will have more of a conversation than talk about alternate planning board members at the joint meeting. I, I think that would be kind of a waste of our, of our meeting, our opportunity. So this might very well be something uh, that we. We send on a, as a tentative agenda, something that we'd like to get some guidance and some thought on.
So Bob, Bob, am I, am I right that, that we haven't heard from them yet? Uh, what's on their agenda for us?
No, I tried to get some information on that, uh, because I was fearing that it was just going to be a beaten greet type of thing, so. I wanted, I, I, I said that, you know, uh, we're sort of itching. To work with you on, on important issues and hamlet issues, so uh, where are we? What's, what's going on? So there are some, apparently some uh, zoning issues will be on there, but I, no, I do not have an agenda. Uh, I think, um. I mean, this is as good a time as any right now. Eldad's made a point and perhaps we can just say, look. In addition to talking about alternate planning board members, perhaps here's three or four things that we would like just to. Uh, tell you that we're thinking about, or um, maybe you're thinking about it too. What's, what's the plan here? What, what, what can we do to support each other? Uh, to get to the, um, where we want to get to.
So, um, I, I'm very respectful of Eldad and his, uh. His concerns about, about this, this issue. I know that we went through in the uh, review of the proposed form-based code legislation. And uh, we got into it, uh, along with Kamaan, uh, pretty thoroughly, I thought, in terms of, uh, gee. You know, is this really going to make a difference? Are we, you know, are we not, you know, pushing the envelope enough? Are we not leaning in enough? And um, now we're, it's, it looks like it's come back to us, uh, in another form. Um, and, you know, maybe I, I, I do think that the, as, as I understand it. The um, the town board is looking at, uh, seriously looking at, uh, moving forward on some sort of, uh. Solution for uh, North Greeley. And the, the, those, they don't have yet, uh, what that solution might be, rezoning, zoning overlay, uh, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera, but. Part of that, I think, is going to be embedded in that is going to be the affordable housing requirement. And the, uh, the impact to developability with respect to how many units. Uh, and the potential for um, some incentives with regard to amount of development in order to achieve. But uh, uh, affordable housing targets, whatever they might be. And unless I'm mistaken, where it was left in the form-based code was, well, we have the county, we have. All the established sort of things that are historically been delivered to us and we're using them. We're going to continue to use them without pushing that envelope. But I think that there's probably going to end up being a deeper discussion about that with respect to the North Greeley corridor. Um, and I wonder whether this, uh, pushing this legislation is premature. In the absence of that discussion and that investigation. And that's up to the town board. I mean, obviously it's up to the town board. But I, I think that the, there's going to be a, unless the discussion happens now, I think there's going to be a. Uh, a deeper, more wide-ranging discussion about this, um, in the, in the weeks and months to come.
I, I have a question. Uh, thanks, Tom. I, I, I think that, that makes sense also. Uh, d- does it? A change like this require any kind of environmental review or no?
Um, yes, there, there would be a secret review, whether it's a, a neg deck or, you know, pos deck is up to the, the lead agency, the town board, but. It is subject to secret.
So I, I, sorry, go ahead, Sabrina.
I was gonna say typically when it's legislative changes like this, it's not like a full-blown examination.
Right, oh, yeah, so are we talking about the AF, the, the local laws before you or the North Greeley?
The local laws before you.
Yeah, so local law that's before you. I mean, it's possible that could even be type two.
Um, you have type two legis, yeah, legislation, it's no physical action.
Right, it's just changing, um, like the, the programmatic, um, you know, uh. Programmatic, e- exactly.
Right, but that, so, so that's what I assumed and that kind of answers, this is sort of a question that answers itself in the sense that. If there's no environmental review necessary, it implies that the legislative change will not really impact or create any sort of. Environmental impact. Um, and that's the whole point, or the point that I'm trying to make is that. Um, this will not have an impact, or I worry that it will not have an impact. Now, I know we've had a moratorium and so it's hard to look at recent. Um, history to determine, you know, had this passed a year or two ago. You know, what impact would it have had? I don't, I guess that's, I'm, I'm not wrong to say that, that's not a fair comparison because of the moratorium, right?
Yeah, the pandemic and everything else.
Right, um, but, you know, so, so maybe it's data would be hard to come by, but it just, um. It feels like it is, uh. Uh, it just, it feels potentially hollow to me and, and so I, so I worry about that.
Well, it, it may be they're thinking these, this is a good set of baby steps. To see if the developers say, okay, if I have five units, I can afford to put twenty percent of, of that, that is one unit. Uh, you know, into the affordable housing, which is not the way it reads now. It, you know, it need a minimum of, what is it, ten? To have one extra. So this is, is a way to test and say, okay, can this be done this way and does it make sense? So that might be what they're thinking, but it would be nice to know what they're thinking.
I think the current, I think the current situation is that there is no requirement in these districts. Isn't that correct, Jennifer and Sabrina? So that this is, this is to, um. Without naming applications, so I'm not going to do that, but we've had recent applications that were approved. And uh, in, in these districts and um, uh, would have otherwise have been subject to this and uh, did not have any um, requirement whatsoever. So I think, uh, that's kind of startled people a little bit. Uh, what they did was perfectly fine, perfectly legal. That's what, that's what the books said. But I think, but people said, uh, that perhaps was not the right thing to do. And so this was, uh, an attempt to close that gap. I think my understanding was that this was going to be automatically just included in the form-based code and now with that falling through. The idea is to at least get this, this patch in. I think it is, I think Eldad, I think it's very fair to describe it as a patch, uh, to close a, a gap.
Um, I agree with that.
And, and um, to move it from there. Uh, again, the moratorium, if, if there is one even now, I don't even know if there's any moratorium at this point. But certainly if there is one, it was only on North Greeley. So there's none at this point, right?
Not at this point, no, not unless they enact a new one.
Right, so uh, at this point, it's free range and so someone could come in at this point, make an application in with no uh, AFFH units whatsoever. In these districts.
Applications are breaking down the door, as you can see.
Seriously?
No.
Okay.
Any application like this would probably be a change of use application that would be before your board.
So, um, uh, uh, one, I welcome the discussion about this with the, at the town board, the joint session, I, you know, if we're, if we're trying to craft an agenda or suggest items from agenda. You know, I, I welcome that discussion. Two, um, I know as a board, we've already sent a memo on this, uh, in support and, uh, so I'm not sure if. Uh, it seems like one, we're being asked again, uh, to discuss this and, um. You know, uh, I've made my point, I think, clear, which is that the patch is fine, but I, you know, I would love it to be as part of something larger with, with a real. Attempt and, and, um, you know, Dick, you, you, you described it as possibly baby steps and that's probably a fair description. Um, but we try not to take, uh, uh, baby steps when, when we have a crisis on our hands. Um, and so, um. I'm not sure what's being asked of us. We already submitted comment. Are we asking, or to be asked for another comment?
I think we're just, we asked to, to weigh in on the current legislation as it's now proposed and.
Being referred to you.
Right, so.
You could simply send your May twentieth, two thousand twenty-one memo. Um, and say that, you know, your, your comments haven't changed or if you want to amend them.
I'm actually hearing some change though.
I mean, I, I, I certainly, uh, uh, would love for them to say. You know, good, but not good enough or, or, or good and I would love to see more. Uh, that's, that's my, that's where I, uh, kind of fall on this.
So, and we can edit that memo based on some of the comments that you guys have, have spoken about tonight. And again, if you want the chairman to review it. You know, we can follow that same process.
Yeah, I'm delighted to have the chairman review it.
Yeah, I, I mean, and, and again, we're just supplementing what you've already written with some new questions, if you will, or new statements, you know, in regards to understanding what's going to happen with North Greeley. That, you know, that on its face, without making additional changes, it doesn't seem to really have an impact.
Well, we can make, we can make a statement that says, it's something along the lines of, uh, what we said here. And then state that we look forward to the opportunity to expand. Um, this initiative, uh, in connection with the, the hamlet plans that are, that are forthcoming. So give them a, you know, let them know it's, we consider it like a toehold and, uh, let's go from there. If, if that's the center of the board.
Okay.
Does that sound okay? Uh, Eldad, I mean, add a, a sentence or two in there, uh, along those lines?
Um, yes, I mean, to, to me, this is, um, sort of, uh, the absolute minimum and, and so in, in that sense, you know, I'm, I'm supportive, but, um. You know, absent, uh, data, it's hard to, um. Say, you know, what, what this, what impact this will have and, and, you know, in, in any real terms. Um, but yes, uh, an additional line or two that, that, um, encourages, uh. You know, a more, um, you know, robust response to, um, the lack of affordable housing, uh, in our town, um, is, is welcome.
Okay.
Okay. Tommy, you're okay with that?
Yes, I am.
Okay, very good. Okay, that's what we'll do then.
All right, we will provide something on both of these, these referrals to you, Bob, um, over the next couple of days.
Okay, thank you. Okay, we have a discussion item. This is our ongoing discussion of the planning board process, uh, the review of the draft. Uh, so we had two versions. Thank you very much for doing the redline version and then the sort of. Final version, of course. Then we also have that, uh, one pager also with the bullets, uh, which I thought was, uh, really good also. So, um. Are there any thoughts on the latest revisions?
Sure.
Yes, sir.
Um, I'm, I'm still stuck with the sketch plan. Uh, a two-dimensional sketch plan, you know, being. a two-dimensional sketch plan, you know, being something that we, uh, or staff can look at and say, oh, yeah, this is, uh, yeah, I see exactly what you're trying to do. Um, I don't think you can even say, I, I, I kind of have a clue what you're doing. You know, with just a sketch. I mean, it, there should be some other things, you know, like photographs of the existing peripheral nat- natural views, view sheds. Simple to do. You have to fly a drone in and take the pictures, or, or walk around and take them. I'd like to see something that's three-dimensional. You know, so that they can do a sketch, you know, to show where everything is going to be, but then I'd like to see what the, you know, what they're thinking about position and how is it going to look when you check with the photographs and everything. It might be easier for staff and for us, when we get to the point when we're going to review a simple, uh, sketch. That we would have a better sense of how to help the applicant get to a better place.
Yeah, we talked about this last time in terms of the ingredients that we might want to see to make some sense out of a sketch, uh, rather than just this plain sketch. And we have an example on this, uh, this evening's agenda. Where our first item really, as it turned out, we had locations, but they were sort of like locations in a vacuum. We needed some fundamental information as to whether or not there are wetlands and wetland buffers. Um, you know, and I think Bob Sealy confirmed that Steve Spokes were not an issue anywhere on, uh, the, the, the four, five or six alternate locations. But it's often difficult to, uh, really give, you know, substantial advice to a, an applicant in a complete vacuum. So you do need some sort of context. And I guess we struggled with that last time where it's something less than a formal application and something where they don't spend a ton of money. But the same token for it to be useful for staff to review, it's got to have some sort of context and some sort of context for us as well. I'm not, I'm not so sure, Dick, uh, the things that you raised are probably good. I'm not so sure they're exhaustive and maybe they don't apply in some cases and we can leave it to staff to see what might, uh, might meet the threshold for a given op, uh, you know, application.
Right. And that, that's where we left it at the last meeting when we had this discussion. Um, so what we added to the rules of procedure was that based on the scope of the application, town staff will advise the applicant of the information to be submitted for the sketch review. And that information is going to be submitted at least 12 calendar days before a planning board meeting. So I think we talked about the fact that some of the things that you mentioned, Dick, absolutely would be helpful, but that, like Bob said, they, it might not be necessarily the case for every application. So to leave it to the discretion of staff to figure out for each one, what the, you know, what the useful information will be.
And it's been, it has been the experience, no matter what we tell them, they may or may not provide what we've asked for.
So I think you have two options. You have the option of, or at least two, the option of keeping the language as it is to, to rely on staff to identify what that appropriate information should be for each application for the sketch. Or if you want to endeavor to come up with a list of things that are the, the minimums that you would want to see, and we can fold those into the rules of procedure. But it's, it's up to you.
I'm, I'm, uh, I think it's, I mean, the more we come up with lists, the more we're sort of, you know, back in the box of, you know, because the list isn't necessarily going to apply to, that list will be a, a, a probably more exhaustive rather than less exhausted lift, list in order for everybody to sort of come up with what they think is important. And, um, we'll end up back in the same box we're in, we're in right now. It's interesting that, um, I, I am in complete confidence that the staff, uh, has enough experience with us to know, you know, what it is that, uh, that worries us, that concerns us and the ways in which we work with applicants to help them, um, get through the process. So I would leave that up to them. What does concern me, Sabrina, is your comment that, that you, you tell them, uh, what they need to submit. And oftentimes they just don't submit everything. They just don't do it.
Well, we see that today.
Okay, I know. And so why, so, but we, we still let them appear without?
We try and stop them.
Well, how, why can't we stop them?
We do.
Well, but, but they appear, this has happened before where they appear before us and something's coming in late and, you know, you guys haven't had a chance to see it. It's like two days, uh, before the meeting, but they're still there and they're presenting material.
Yeah, and sometimes even that's a matter of discretion because there are some folks who have just been so recalcitrant, to put it nicely, uh, and unwilling that frankly, at some point, you know, staff and legal says, you know what? You better go to the planning board so you can hear directly from them. Maybe they need to beat you up a little bit to give, then you make, you know, staff looks good next to us. So they'll want to go back to staff and then work with staff rather than come back to us and, and have us say, are you kidding? So we've had that a couple of times, uh, e- even in recent memory, uh, where we've had applicants who just flat out refused. Not only refused to listen to staff, but if you recall, we've had wonderful meetings where they've argued with staff, told, uh, our engineer what engineering should be done, told our lawyer that, uh, this is, you're, you're interpreting your own laws incorrectly. So I don't think we see it that often. And the, tonight, for example, I thought this was, look, we gave the instructions to, to help us with locations before we spent a lot of money and time, but as it turns out, what they gave us was, it just didn't have enough context to make, uh, a meaningful conversation. So they could have been on this evening and they could have heard that, but frankly, uh, staff handled it diplomatically today, um, and said, look, it's really in your best interest that you, uh, you pull this application and, and, and work on it.
Okay. So Sabrina, your comment, um, where do we go with your comment that very often people just aren't going to produce what we ask them to produce?
Well, well, I, I think, I think we play it on a case-by-case basis as we do now. You know, we push them as far as staff can push them to provide what we need. And in the event that we have, um, an adamant applicant, um, you know, we'll put them before your board and you guys can try and get them to do what they need to do. I mean, that's what happens today.
Yeah, in some cases, there's a legitimate, uh, dispute as to, um, you know, our recommend, our staff's recommendations. And maybe Bob is making a statement and, uh, their engineer is saying absolutely not. I disagree with that. And we'll listen to it and, um, and politely then tell them to listen to Bob.
Actually, unless I'm mistaken, uh, Jennifer and Sabrina, it's actually the right of an applicant to challenge, uh, staff conclusions and decisions and bringing them before the board for
Ultimately, it's the board's decision.
Right.
Right.
Right. And, and, and staff don't ever put themselves in a position where we are like hard and fast and no, you can't. That's not our role. You know, we try and work with the applicants and get the, get the projects in the best shape possible. So you folks have all the information you need to make good decisions.
What we do is recommend.
Yes.
And if they have a different opinion, they approach the board and the board makes the final decision. Yep.
Okay, so we can, um, we can finalize the procedures? Or do you want to, you know, adopt them? What would they do with them, Jen?
I think we should adopt them with a motion.
Yeah, I, I agree. You should do that, too.
Uh, and do any thoughts on the, uh, on the, the short form here, the bullet form? We cut out some of the stuff, which I thought was very good to do. And now it's, uh, less daunting. Any thoughts on that document?
Other than what I made.
Okay.
Um, I guess I would, you know, this one, I'm sure the staff would take care of it, but the applicant has to know that all property lines and, um, and, uh, and wetland setbacks. That's another thing before we even go anyplace. I mean, because and staff can't go anywhere that he wants, somebody wants to build something in a swamp.
Right. And, and Dick, and Dick, here's the thing, we have application forms that require the minimums in each of these steps that, you know, applicants will fill out. And, you know, there's some bare minimum that they'll need to identify. And, you know, the tree coverage, the wetlands, the buffers, all of that goes, you know, property lines, neighbors' houses.
Setbacks.
Setbacks.
That's all, that's all basic stuff.
It's all like prescriptive, right? If you don't have enough property to fit it, because you can't meet zoning setbacks, then you don't have an application.
No, that's easy. Then you build a tower.
We have height restrictions.
So, okay. Other than what I said, I'm good.
Okay. Tom, Eldad, okay?
I have more, uh, comment though, before we leave this.
Sure, sure, please.
This is a comment, uh, the eight, section eight, comments by members of the public.
Yes.
C talks about the public may be granted additional speaking time. But, you know, A doesn't really define speaking time type of thing. So it's, I, I think C should just come out.
Yeah.
And let the chair entertain comments of the public as to the merits of any item set forth in the public hearing. Such comments shall, may be limited. Uh, all who speak must identify themselves. You know, I think that covers it without C, which I find, huh, additional to what?
Yep. That's, uh, it was back when we had the five-minute, uh, rule in there.
Hmm.
Okay. Good point. We could take that out. Okay, anyone else, anything? If not, is there a motion to adopt the, uh, rules of procedure as amended?
So moves.
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
I? Are you opposed? No? Okay, it's carries for zero. Very good. Thanks. Again, Jennifer, thank you. Thank you, Sabrina, for all the work on this. Much appreciated. So, um, in a telling point, I just threw away my agenda, but we have minutes next. So we have four sets of, uh, minutes here. And, uh, the first one coming up is the June 1, 2021.
I have no comments.
Uh, the only question I had on this, Jennifer and maybe Sabrina and Felicia, the first vote, four eyes, no, no, no one against and one absent. But, um, the minutes show that everyone was here.
So, the reason I have, I can actually explain that. The reason I have that there is because Canaan had joined late to the meeting. So she was absent for that vote.
Okay.
We should probably note that in the minutes.
When she joined the meeting, yeah.
Yes.
We customarily do that, I believe, or when she exits. Yeah. Okay, that explains that one. Anyone else, anything on, uh, the set of minutes? So, okay. If not, is there a motion to adopt the minutes of, uh, June 1, 2021?
So move.
Second?
As amended, Mr. Chairman.
As amended. Yes, thank you. Uh, second?
Second.
All in favor?
Yes.
I, yes. Okay, very good. Uh, the next set is June 16, 2021. I had one typo. That is on, uh, page two, line 22. I think it's rip rap instead of rock put in.
Wait, line 22?
Yeah, I think it's rip rap. Instead of rock in.
R I P R A P?
Yes.
Okay.
Anyone else? Any other changes? If not, is there a motion to adopt the June 16 minutes as amended?
Motion.
Second?
Second.
All in favor? I, yes, whatever.
Yes.
All right, yes.
Okay, motion's carried for zero. Thank you. Uh, we have July 20, 2021. I had a couple of, uh, very minor, um, wordsmithing things that I can send to you, Felicia.
Okay.
They are not substantive, although on, on, uh, page six, line 42, Eldad now has a new, uh, planning board name, Mr. Eldad.
Congratulations.
I've, I've been called worse.
So with that change and a couple of the, uh, miniscule things I sent, I'll send into you. Any other change, any other changes, uh, folks?
Nope.
Okay, if not, uh, by the way, Eldad, you can leave that in if you wish. Uh, that was just my point, but if you want to leave it in as Mr. Eldad, uh, like the big E, Elgin Hayes from, uh, Houston, many, many years ago, many years ago.
Um, you know, it's probably better for consistency that it's a Mr. Got help.
Okay, very good.
All right. Is there a motion to adopt the, uh, July 20 minutes as amended?
Motion.
Second? All in favor? I, yes.
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 Okay, motions carried for zero. Thank you. And the last set is September 8. Again, I have a couple of minor things with Felicia on these that I'll send to you.
Okay.
I was absent. Should I, should I, uh, not vote on this?
Yeah, if you were not at the meeting, then you should not vote, Eldad.
Yes.
Unless you can say you've watched the video and can confirm that it's accurate, which probably better to not vote.
Yeah.
Obviously, I've watched it multiple times, but I still
They're better as reruns.
Yeah, you can do other things.
Exactly. Great. Uh, okay, so amongst the three of us then is a motion to adopt the minutes as amended with some wordsmithing.
A move.
Second?
Second.
All in favor?
I.
Yes.
Yes, okay, so three, zero, motion's carried. And, uh, we're done. So we meet, uh, with the town board. I'll try to get, um, try to eat out, maybe Sabrina, you can do that also. Maybe you, you have better, uh, better influence, more influence to sort of
Well, if I, if I may, I would like to inform the town administrator that you wish to speak about the AFFH in the BR, BRP zoning districts, the discussion of alternates. And then I heard, um, have a discussion regarding intentions with North Greeley.
Yep.
Right? Is there anything else that's at the top of your minds you wish me to share at the moment? And that's not to say that this is the only opportunity you'll get.
Right.
Oh, that's, that's a good list. That's enough.
Yeah, well, and, and also, you know, I, the, the meeting will be in person in town hall, I believe. So.
Yeah, that's good.
Um, I'll make sure that you guys get communication. Please
It will.
On emails.
What?
What?
Didn't, it will be
How can it be if the governor is, if the governor says, gotta wait until March 16th to find out?
That's not what he said.
You're allowed to have but that's not, it's not perclusive of having in-person meetings.
Right. And I think Sabrina mentioned before with that, it's likely that if we do it that way, we might get the chat pack.
Yeah. Also, the governor is not a he anymore.
Thank you, Eldad.
Who said that? Someone call it he?
Who called her he?
Yeah.
We, we can check, we can check the minutes.
They're supposed to call everybody they now.
Yep. Keep it fluid.
Uh, I have a question, um, it, for the joint meeting with the town board, will will we have a normal planning board meeting or, or our own agenda or, or no?
No.
Okay.
No, your next application, your next normal meeting is the second meeting in March.
Got it.
You have, you currently have one, one application for that meeting.
Okay.
Okay, and let's be find fault and then we take it off.
Right. All righty. Okay, is there a motion then to close the meeting?
No, let's talk some more. I'm having fun. Motion moved.
All right, second?
Second.
All in favor?
All right.
Yes.
Yes.
All right, motion's carried. Thank goodness. We're done.